I hope you enjoy yourself. The time is now 5:30 PM and I will call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. We are going to start with the invocation. I'll ask Commissioner Mesmer to lead us in the prayer.
I'll read the chant of Psalm 23. The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures. He leadeth me beside the still waters. He restoreth my soul. He leadeth me in the passive righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thy rod and thy staff, they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of mine enemies. Thou anointest my head with oil, my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Saint your champion.
Thank you. And now the place of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance, simply fire. In the United States of America. And to God, with all his saints. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and Mark, if you could read the conflict of interest, please.
Yes, ma'am. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion or vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
No.
None.
I have one on number nine with the school district.
And I have none. Thank you, Mark. And ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take things just a little bit out of order so we can try to accommodate everyone and get you in and out for those that are waiting on proclamation. So we are going to start with item number one, presentation of proclamations and recognition of awards. And Christina, can you start with A?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission, City Management, and our guests who are with us today. The city of Harlingen is proclaiming National Historic Preservation Month today. So the proclamation being presented is as follows. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973 to promote historical places to revitalize neighborhoods and foster local pride and community character while enhancing livability. And Historic Preservation Month can instill awareness of the local historically significant buildings and landmarks among the residents of Harlingen and surrounding communities. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and Americans of all ages, walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is essential to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has helped shape us. Preserving our historic resources is vital to ensuring the successes of a commercial and residential environment and maintaining the character and heritage of the city of Harlingen. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Norma Sepulveda and the Harlingen City Commission does hereby proclaim May 2023 as National Historic Preservation Month. Here to receive the proclamation is the wonderful downtown team. And this is the 16th consecutive year that they have been nationally accredited as a Main Street program. Congratulations.
We thank you for your hard work and dedication. If you would please join me and the City Commission, and we'd love to take a photo with you as we present your proclamation.
And we also want to thank the downtown Harlingen business owners who are with us today for this recognition. Next up, we have our police chief, who will be presenting about the lifesaving award.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I want to recognize a few officers tonight for an incident that occurred on December 6th of last year. And I could tell you all about it, but I have a little video clip from the news I'd like to show you. Sergio's going to cue it up.
Take a look at this. It was heart pounding moments when Harlingen emergency crews jumped into canal to rescue woman after she crashed her car. The rescue all caught on camera. First responders who were there at the scene shared more on their daring efforts to go. She's still there, bud. First responders acting fast. Listen, received a call of a vehicle with a woman trapped inside.
The party was upside down in about, I'd say about four feet of water. It was about just deep. And when we got in the water, we could hear her screaming. And so the good thing was we knew she had air.
Once first responders arrived, they dropped everything and jumped into the canal. Everybody hurry in. One guy's saving the guns, anybody else get in here. Hurry, hurry.
Well, at that point, it's like for this, we didn't worry about too much. We just took off and jumped in.
The car handle was broken, presenting a challenge for the crew. The team finally able to lift the vehicle, reach through the window, and get her out just in time.
We appreciate everything, but I think it's kind of, that's what we do. I would hope any officer were jumping a lot of it. I mean, if it was my kid in there, I would hope they would do what we do.
Police believe the woman was not familiar with the area of horses in Rangerville, and she sped through it then and leading her to crash in the canal. She's expected to be okay.
Obviously, the preservation of life is the only one on this choice there. Anytime life is in danger, we're going to do what we need to do.
So if anybody's ever been in a canal, you know how muddy they are and how tough, it was a tough job for them to do that. And they did it without even thinking. So it's an outstanding job by them. And we're going to recognize them with a lifesaving award now. So I'm going to call up, let's see, Officer Manuel Rosales, Officer Guillermo Cruz, Officer Israel Martinez, Officer Matthew Zuniga, and of course Commander Charles Fechner. Not only do they get a nice plaque, they get a lifesaving ribbon and an award to go with it.
Congratulations. I'll get to you right here. We are pretty very, very proud of you, Harlingen. Please, I mean, you guys go above and beyond, not just in this district, but always. So we truly care to you and hope you know how much we all thank you. Right? I think everybody appreciates you.
Okay, ready? One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Got it. Yes. All right. I think we all remember seeing that story on the news and how awesome it was that our police department just jumped right in to save lives. So we really appreciate them for all that they do. Each one of them that's here with us today. And we have a full house today. Some of those who join us, we always love when our students are here participating in our city meetings. We have the Harlingen Cardinals Girl Soccer Team who is with us today. They are waiting outside eagerly. So Officer Delua is going to go call them up here as we present them with this award. Thanks to everyone who has stuck around to cheer them on as well. It's very nice of y'all. I think y'all will have to squeeze in up here. We have a full house, so we appreciate you all for waiting patiently outside. So I know the mayor and commission is behind you, but they are the ones presenting this award to each of you here today. So before us, we have the Harlingen Cardinals Girl Soccer Team. And I believe some of their parents are joining us here today. So we also want to recognize them for supporting Harlingen students and their children. This was the first time in a while that the team has been undefeated in district. So they had a 10-0 record. So how about a round of applause for them for that? So the city of Harlingen and the mayor and city commission are presenting you all with a special award for the Harlingen Cardinals Girl Soccer Team for an exceptional season and outstanding accomplishments. Undefeated 32-6A district champions with a record of 10-0. Joining us here today is their head coach, Jose Galván. It's actually his first year, so 10-0 for his first year. Congratulations. We want to recognize you for your excellent athletic performance and sportsmanship in this soccer season. Presented on this third day of May by the mayor and city commission. Congratulations. We ask y'all to come up. Hopefully you can fit everyone in this photo so y'all might want to step forward one and make two rows.
Congratulations.
I do. It's cool.
Moving right along, Christina.
So the Harlingen Cardinals Boy Soccer Team is making their way in here. They'll also have to stand up front because we have a full house. So we appreciate you all being here with us today and waiting patiently. All right. So joining us here today at the city is the Harlingen Cardinals Boy Soccer Team, as well as their head coach, Joseph Johnson, and their assistant coaches, Avon Benia and Manuel Villanueva, as well as some of the parents. If you're one of their parents, if you could please stand and wave as well to be recognized because they couldn't do this without you. We know you've been driving them to practices early mornings after school since they were kids, so thank you for that. The city of Harlingen is presenting this award to the Harlingen Cardinals Boy Soccer Team for their wonderful season, an exceptional season, and outstanding accomplishments. This year, they were bi-district champions, area champions, and made it to the regional quarterfinals and were named regional quarterfinalists. So they had not made it that far, I believe, since 2000. So it has been 23 years, and we are so proud to have these exceptional young men here with us today. In recognition of your excellent athletic performance and sportsmanship for sports competitions, soccer competitions, we present you with this award on behalf of the mayor and city commission on this third day of May 2023. Congratulations. And this award is by the mayor and city commission. So they'll make their way down here to present you with the award. And we'd like to get a few photos. So if you could make two lines because not. Oh, yes, yes. All right, ready? One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Thank you, Christina, for that. It's always wonderful to have our students here and to be able to recognize them for their dedication and their hard work, along with their academics. Okay, so now, just quickly, I want to make sure that the record reflects that Commissioner Lopez has joined us. And we did go over the conflict of interest. And is there any items that need attention, Commissioner?
No, no objections.
Okay, thank you. And now we will move on to citizen communication. Melinda?
We have a total of eight mayor. Out of those eight, seven requested to be named. Copies were distributed to the commission. We shall begin with Ms. Tracy Roberts. Ms. Roberts. Sorry, Mr. Roberts.
I'm so sorry.
I'm Mr. Roberts. It's my mom's fault.
You have three minutes.
Greetings, Mayor, city officials, and city commissioners. My name is Mr. Tracy Roberts. Owner of Bicycle World, owner of Bicycle RGV and treasurer of the Valley Offroad Bicycle Association. And on behalf of both Bicycle World and Vorba, as well as the many trail runners and cyclists, I am for the expansion of the current trail system. The expansion will give us trail opportunities that you can only find in larger cities, making Harlingen a unique experience. This has made Harlingen a destination city for trail riders all over the valley, including cities from up north of us, as well as Mexico. Some reasons we should consider the expansion is because it's great for local business and has firsthand boosted our economy. It's been good for local athletic stores and good for our restaurants. Many times after a ride, we've gone to town to go at a local restaurant, go out and eat, support them. People often go shopping in other retail stores as well. And hotels have even benefited from the trail system, specifically from the mountain bike race we held back in October. That brought about a little over 200 families, racers and families in the town. And they all stayed at the local hotels. They all ate at the local restaurants. They're from both local, Mexico, San Antonio, Austin, Houston, Dallas, and even out of state. It's been great for the community and health, not only has it brought and connected the whole valley together, but has helped people forge strong friendships, as well as directly resulting positively, changing people's lives for better through both physical and mental health. And one thing I would like to fact, get outside my family directly, access to the nature. My girls love to go to the trail system and to the Hugh Ramsey Nature Park. They love to go see all the wildlife that's out there. And all of this would give them direct access from about where my house lives, just walking out the front door to a possible trailhead. And lastly, the thing I'm most excited about is that this leaves a pathway to potential youth in high school running and mountain biking sports programs, not only promoting health and wellness, but giving opportunities to these kids to enjoy something great that they would otherwise never have an opportunity to experience. So that's all I have to say. Thank you all for listening to my.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Mr. Roberts. My apologies. Next, we have Ms. Diana Esparsa. Diana Esparsa?
She's right there.
Come on up. Come on up. You have three minutes. This is okay.
Greetings, Mayor, City Commission, and staff. My name is Diana Esparsa, and I'm here in support of our department with many Harlingen heroes. This video that we saw was very benefiting as to, and will go along with what I have to say. I have had the privilege and honor to work alongside our Harlingen Police Department and support their excellent and expert work done by all officers. They not only uphold the law, they investigate, and they're there to answer questions or direct citizens as needed. They are also very involved in our community with the recent Autism Awareness Event, the barbecue cook-off that's coming up, and our Harlingen Heroes Annual Run, Shop With A Cup, and many other community events. This is something comical. My only negative comment about PD was that I was pulled over for a rolling stop. But the officer that pulled me over was only doing his duty. It's okay. He was only doing his job and upholding the law. And he was doing what he swore to do. Let's take care of our Harlingen heroes. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. David Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez.
All right. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is David Hernandez. I am the current president of the Valley Offroad Bicycling Association, or Vorba. We are a local chapter of the International Mountain Bike Association, and we represent over 75 members, volunteer trail builders, and a ridership of hundreds of riders from across the Rio Grande Valley. Our organization supports the Phase 3 expansion of the Harlingen Arroyo Trails. We have been involved with the city of Harlingen Parks and Recreation over the last six years in helping develop our primitive trail system that weaves along the embankments of the Arroyo Colorado. We have built over 10 miles of single-track trails for the community to enjoy. And we will soon be installing a first-of-its-kind 911 coordinate system that will assist anyone with a medical emergency along our trail system. We hosted our first state championship race back in October of 2022, and we had over 300 people from across the state, Canada, and Mexico that attended. Green spaces like the Arroyo Trails have become a prized commodity in growing communities like Harlingen. According to the Trail Counter data captured by the Texas A&amp;M Mobility Institute's Texas Bicycle Pedestrian Count Exchange, we have seen a 360% increase in trail users since October of 2021. Over 40,000 people have accessed these trails since that year. And data has continued to be recorded using this counter system. And we have only just begun. Expansion of the Arroyo Trails will allow us to connect our trail systems from Dixieland Park all the way to Hugh Ramsey Park and beyond. This affords our community to have accessible trail right outside their front doorstep. The health and mental wellness that comes with access to outdoor spaces are immeasurable. Cyclists who are able to ride their bikes on a protected trail away from traffic and cars are another benefit. Other trail users like runners, walkers, dog walkers, families with strollers, and children on balance and bikes with training wheels will also benefit from these outdoor spaces. Finally, we have come, we've seen an increase in the military veteran community in accessing the sport of mountain biking as a way to deal with depression and PTSD. We want to be able to have the outdoor green space to allow us to build trails that are accessible to all. Mayor and Commissioners, please support the Phase 3 expansion for our growing community.
Thank you for being an incredible community partner. Can we follow up with Mr. Raymond Reyes? Mr. Reyes?
Mayor, City Commissioners, Raymond Reyes, 7:06, and I took a drive. So I didn't even know about the trail thing, but I think it's a good thing. It's a plus. I used to take my kids out there. I used to take my kids out there when they were small. They're not so small now, they're grown and gone, but that's okay, they're progressing. Just like I hope Harlingen continues progressing, just like anything else. As I've mentioned before, it's always a work in progress, just like anything in life. So when good things come along, like the trail, I think it's a positive thing that we should stay behind and expand, because there's a lot of positive things that go with that. On the same token, we must remember, and I, I'm very critical about this, not just with the city, but in my businesses and personal life, is oversight, make sure the right things are going on for the right reasons, making sure the checks and balances are in place, that we don't have, let's just say, a Wild, Wild West atmosphere out there. And what I noticed today was, and realized that, we've been holding meetings here in this particular building for a very, very long time. The city has grown and expanded. I think maybe at some point, maybe we should possibly look into, I don't know, applying for some grants, trying to get possibly a bigger facility made for, you know, we're obviously getting a lot more things going on where people are having to wait outside. I know I've been out there when some people have been here during these type of ceremonies, when they want to get information or stay informed, but they leave because they think it's going to be like this the whole time. So again, that's just a little bit of food for thought down the line, maybe, that can be looked into. But I think we're going in the right direction. The key is to maintain the direction and not lose, you know, track of what the goal is. And the goal is to make a better city for all the citizens of Harlingen, not just, you know, certain individuals, but everybody needs to benefit of the great things Harlingen can stand for and can do. Thank you for your time. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Okay, Mayor, next we have Ms. Lenore Combs.
Good evening, everybody. Lenore Combs, 4137 North Minnesota Street, Sunshine Country Club Estates. Thank you for having me. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, we are longstanding residents and have been on several committees serving our community. We support the police. The police contract is up for renewal. We hope you will give them salaries commensurate with the surrounding areas like Mission and McAllen. Pay gaps never negatively impact the police and the community in which they serve. Several local cities have lucrative contracts. Harlingen needs to attract and hold on to good quality offices, block the revolving door. Effective policing is a calling. Provide flexibility for advancement, especially educational. Support this initiative. Pay gaps negatively impact the police, but comprehensive compensation and retirement packages for them are for their protection and our future. They should not have to work part-time to subsidize their salary. This request action is an attractive influence to join and stay as opposed to lowering standards and a personnel who can't and does not measure up. Effective police work is hard. Police work is a profession. They should not have to subsidize their salary or work 12-hour shifts. We want the police to feel invited and their families, and we want them to stay and train and protect us. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, now we have Mr. Ronaldo Es Lozano.
Thank you, District 3. Continuing on that theme, I think there are several people here, like Mr. Delua and others that are, and the current police chief, that recognize that our family was instrumental in providing their families with a pension. It was not a, it was not an easy struggle. But I wanted to address the calamitous five days that we've had in our nation, where in my profession, the Supreme Court has acted like the Supremes. They don't want ethics, they don't believe in ethics, and it doesn't pertain to them, and they can see the coronation this Saturday, I guess, the entire day. And of course, this afternoon, we might have a more pivotal moment with the Federal Reserve yet again increasing the rate. So we also have moments of that caliber. And since 1973, with very few amendments, one recently done by a Valley legislator, the Open Meetings Act has been a beacon of hope across the nation, and it still remains a law to this day. Even if some on the podium cannot grasp its import or its dictates, transparency has a common dictionary meaning. It does not mean you should silence democratic voices for whatever reason a whim is pursued. A reason given for the citizen communication change is that one of you waits till the last moment to read the communiques, or is slow a reader, or is stricken with both of those deficiencies. But that doesn't mean you go change in the middle of the stream without notice, that is of any bona fide manner. So regardless of individual ability of some of you, transparency is openness. The city will one day be open, as some of our younger persons pour their hearts into making this a better city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano. Last, we have Ms. Kelly Cunningham. Mr. Cunningham? Oh, my goodness.
Melinda.
It's not my day.
Two for two. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to talk on behalf of the support of the trail expansion. I've lived in Austin for 40 years. I retired after 25 years with the Travis County Gymnastics Probation Department, and my wife and I decided it was time to get out of Austin and make a decision on where we want to live in Texas. And I will tell you that the Arroyo Trail System was a major factor in my decision to purchase a home here in the valley and move down here, and I think that's, it's a good thing. And also, I'd like to say that, you know, we, as a, as a community, as a cycling community, we spent Saturday and Sunday, about 30 to 35 of us maintaining the trails, you know, and raking up glass and cleaning and, and, you know, trimming, and so, you know, at no cost to the city. So trail expansion, I think, is a good thing, and it, I think, I may be naive, but I think it's going to draw more people down to the valley. We have a world-class trail system down here with the Arroyo Trails being the cherry. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
That's all for today, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item two, approval of minutes. We have the regular minutes of March 15, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, consent agenda. We have items three A through J.
I wanted to put, I guess, pull out J or making a change to it.
Yeah, we'll be pulling J and B.
And what, I'm sorry?
B is a void.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion for the consent agenda, pulling out B and J?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3B, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading for a SUP to allow an unmanned battery storage facility in a general retail district to be located along the east side of Loop 499, being 277 feet north of Grimes Road, bearing a legal description of tract A out of the proposed Citrus Flat subdivision being 8.27 acres out of Block 8, Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision.
Reviewing the minutes, I had forgotten that I wanted to add to the SUP that upon this project ending or the use of the facility, that the company remove the batteries. That's all I wanted to add.
I think we did discuss.
We did discuss it, but I don't think it was included. I talked to Mr. Sevantes, I don't believe it was. Is that correct?
That's correct, so it could be added?
Correct. I'm just asking for that one line to be added, and then for this to become essentially standard moving forward on all battery storage facilities.
You're talking 20, 30 years down the road.
Correct.
Okay. I won't be here to witness it. Thank you.
Do we have, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the SUP, subject to that language being added.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 3J, consideration and possible action to approve the installation of speedhumps along the 3900 block of Arroyo Vista Court and 600 block north O Streets. Gentlemen?
I just wanted to add Tangelo Drive to the list, so requesting installation of speedhumps on Tangelo Drive from Atos Palmas to Orange Drive between those two.
And to add West Lozano Street, once we have completed the repairs on that street.
And for the community that is here to know that these speedhumps are only looked into after the request of the community in your respective districts, right?
Correct.
Okay, do we have a motion?
One second, I have one more, I forgot. My bad. Trying to get the on Kingborough Drive between between Mulberry and Virial? Virial Lane? No, it's the I.
Did you get that, Craig?
Okay, we're good. Is that it?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve item 3J with amendments that Commissioner Peddus and I have included.
Second.
I have a question for Craig.
Yes, sir.
So can we just toss in streets at any time, or these streets have been reviewed by you and everyone else in the process?
Craig Cook, Assistant City Manager. We always review them after they're recommended here at the commission.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So this doesn't mean they're going in automatically?
No, no.
You'll do the studies.
This initiates the traffic data of review.
Okay, great, thank you.
And they don't always make it?
That's right, they don't always pass the review, and they don't always get installed. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we had a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, item four, public hearing and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for an SUP to allow a non-residential foster care facility in general retail district located at 702 South Ed Carey Drive, bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Block 1, South Point subdivision, Unit 2. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, City Commissioners, good evening. This facility is proposed along the east side of Ed Carey Drive, just south of Gale, the sounding of general retail districts all around. And this is part of a bigger building. You have the bowling alley just south for this proposed foster care facility. And that's a photo of the building, and we've all seen it when we drive along Ed Carey for this proposed facility. Another view. And that's the floor plan of the building, where there's going to be offices and intake for kids for foster care. They come in here, and then homes are found for the, for the kids, and then they're driven to the, to the respective house that is found for them. And no kid stays overnight, they're, you know, they're just intake here and then delivered to the, to the house that is found for the kids.
And these are children that are being brought to them by CPS for assignment?
Different agencies, different agencies, yeah. Staff recommends approval of this special use permit, subject to the following condition. No children shall be, shall be allowed to stay overnight under any circumstance. Security cameras shall have a minimum retention of 90 days. The police department shall approve the camera locations. A manager must be present at all times, must have the state and local licenses and approval from all the different departments. This went before the Planning and Sonning Commission, April 26, and no one spoke in opposition to this special use permit request, and after some discussion, they recommended approval unanimously. And the applicant is here in case you have additional questions.
Is there any questions for Javier? Okay, at this time, we will open it up for the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one here to
This is pretty trigger-happy there, but regardless, this is Ed Carey, as I understood, and
Could please state your name for the record?
District 3. This is a heavily traveled thoroughfare. I just wondered if there were any other alternatives to having children, even if they don't stay overnight. Right now, we have daylight savings time, there's at least 12 hours of daylight that they might be there and possibly more. It just seems like there should be a more secure location. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one else to speak, we will close the public hearing at this time, and I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
In ordinance amending the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the City of Harlingen, to issue a special use permit SUP to Gale Curry, CO Hands of Healing, to allow a non-residential foster care facility in the general retail GR district located at 702 South Ed Carey Drive, bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Block 1, South Point subdivision, Unit 2.
Is there a motion?
Submove.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, public hearing and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for an SUP to allow an unmanned battery storage facility in general retail district located at a property along the south side of Lincoln Avenue, approximately 300 feet east of Tucker Road, bearing a legal description of 4.4750 acres out of 5.230 acres out of Block 2, Howard Dixieland Heights, Number 1 subdivision. This item was tabled at the last meeting. Do we have a motion to remove it from the table?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the item has now been removed from the table. Is there any discussion? Javier, do you have?
The language that was added to the previous ordinance, we could certainly add that to this ordinance. The applicant is here, hoping for an approval so that this project will go forward.
Any questions for Javier? Okay, at this time, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there any
There's no public hearing, it's just because it was held.
Says public hearing.
It says public hearing. No, it was held. It was just tabled, no, that's a mistake. But the public hearing was held two weeks ago.
Okay, so it's on the agenda. So is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the adoption of the ordinance? Maybe the applicant? Is he in the room?
He's right there.
Oh, I thought you maybe stepped out. Okay.
Should I ask him, you make any comments?
Would you like to speak or?
Uh, no.
No, okay, thank you. All right, we will close the public hearing, and I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
In ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, ordinance number 16-8, to issue a special use permit SUP to allow a battery storage energy facility in a general retail GR district bearing a legal description of 4.4750 acres out of 5.230 acres out of Block 2, Howard Dixieland Heights, Number 1 subdivision, subject to the conditions outlined in the body of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Well, just to make that amendment, I know that the ordinance, as you read by Mr. Sassi, you said the way it was written, I want to add that, make sure that we had the language we just discussed, and so it would be to approve the ordinance, subject to the change that was discussed on the previous item.
Which was for the applicant?
Correct, which would be that
The better.
Upon completion of the use of the facility, the batteries would be removed by whoever owns it, whether it's y'all or someone else.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a second?
Yeah, I did the second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary rankings for engineering services as recommended by the evaluation services as recommended by the evaluation committee, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for associate, associated engineering services pursuant to the city's request for qualifications, number 2023-11, professional engineering design and environmental permitting for the Arroyo Colorado hike and bike trail extension, Phase Three. This item was also tabled at the last regular meeting on April 19, 2023. Do we have a motion to remove it from the table?
Make a motion to remove it. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is now removed from the table, and Javier?
Yes, Javier Mendez, Park Director, for, for the record. From the last, since the meeting that we had and when it was tabled, we did conduct a, sort of an informal meeting with the residents from the area, from Parkwood and Sam Houston and River, Riverview, I think, Riverside. We had delivered these notices. We did have a meeting on Monday evening, and we felt that, for the most part, the, the folks that were against it did voice their concerns. Their concerns were, of course, homeless people living out there, erosion, and so, so anyway, we addressed it. We, we mentioned to them that upon hiring the firm, the engineering firm, that they would determine the route that this trail will take. And so, one thing that they did ask is that when we're planning this, if they would be involved in the, in the planning or in discussions, whatever comes out from their, their design that we include them in the planning part of it. And so, like I said, for the most part, I think that they were okay with us moving forward, as long as we include them in, in the planning part of it.
And there would be a public hearing, once this moves forward, then the engineer, engineering firm would hold a public hearing, right, for anyone, including them, to participate?
Yes, ma'am. And one other thing that we did explain to them, what this, this was just a planning grant, there was no construction involved, so it's, would basically determine whether it's feasible to build this trail or not.
And so, I want to say thank you for contacting the property owners and getting their input.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for Javier? Do we have a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Item seven, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution finding that AEP's application to amend its distribution cost recovery factors to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied authorization participation with the cities served by AEP, authorizing the hiring of legal counsel, and finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, and finding that the meeting at which the resolution is passed to the public as required by law. Okay?
Mayor, Members of the Commission, AEP has filed another application to amend its distribution cost recovery factor. They are looking to recover $39.7 million in fees that will impact the average residential homeowner by $1.63 on their utility bill. They're looking, and this is from the, the law firm of Thomas Mercado, they're also looking to recover an additional $30.67 million in generation fees for mobile generation, for a total of $70.37 million in costs, which would impact the residential customer by approximately $2.93 a month. This resolution would authorize us to hire Thomas Mercado and Karina Lipo. We've done that before in the past, and fees for their services would be paid for by AEP. Staff recommends approval.
And so, as, as Gabe said, we've done this in the past. In fact, we do this every, every rate hike cycle, and it's just a game we play, a game they play.
So who reached out to who?
They reach out to us.
Have we hired them before?
Yes, we have.
Okay, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, by law, utilities have to notify the communities of any proposed rate increases that goes to the state, and then everybody can argue this and that and all that sort, and...
And my concern is more bear tree than anything else.
Bear tree?
When a lawyer goes out to solicit you to become their client.
Oh, bear tree?
Bear tree.
I heard a bear in the tree.
But if we've used them in the past.
We have, and, and they reach out to us only when AEP files a rate case with the PUC.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Staff recommends approval.
Yes, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item eight, consideration and possible action to approve allocation of funds, totally $96,000, to provide legislative consulting services between the City of Harlingen and NGPS LLC, otherwise known as George Segalos. Do we have...
No, I'm going to handle this, I'm, Mayor. The 4A, the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation, has approved $96,000 in funds for the city to hire George Segalos, who would be our consultant in Washington. We, the airport is currently using his services to provide assistance to them. He has done a really good job in keeping the airport in front of the legislators and letting them know what their needs are. So we are recommending approval of the contract. The contract, as stated, it's for $10,000 a month, but I was able to negotiate that down to $8,000 a month with him, so total cost would be $96,000.
And I'll just add, for the Commission, I know that a few of us made it out to Washington and had an opportunity to speak with him and learn a little bit more about him, and I think that he would do great work for the City of Harlingen. I think that we need to be able to have representation on the, on the federal level, and this would be a good opportunity for us to do so with someone that's well-established and has a network and is well-respected in this field. So I would recommend that this Commission to, to approve. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I'm curious. How can the feds help with more than the state level, than our own state, in getting grants and funds for what we need here?
I'll just say that, that we want, we want, this, this, I'm sorry, but I would say that, you know, we want help from both the state and the federal level. We're working very closely with our congressman at this time, and we don't, we're not at liberty to discuss it right now, but it does, it does look like this is going to be a very good session for, for Harlingen. And moving forward, we want to make sure that we have someone to advocate for us and be able to get even more dollars here to Harlingen. I know that everyone on this Commission is concerned with drainage, economic development, and abilities to provide for our community, and I think this is the, the right step in the, in that direction.
Got you.
And we met with him, I met with him when we went to DC. The guy's fantastic, and what I love about him is that he has proven results with our airport.
Right.
So there's things like dollars that, that we have gotten, millions of dollars, is because this guy has put us before the right people at the right time, and he puts us to work, right? Well, that's what I also love about him, is that he's going to reach out to Gabe or to Mark, or to Nora, or myself, sooner than there, and he's saying, or all of us, say, hey, I need letters for this, I need letters for that, so that we can get those funding opportunities that we have missed in the past, so...
And he's very receptive, responsive to, to emails and phone calls, and communication, I think, is key, and he's proven time and time again, at least with the airport, that he's readily available, and also looking for things that we don't know about, and I think that that's what's important, you know, and we can't, we can't just rely on this Commission to, to look for what is available. This is something that he'll be able to produce and show and, and provide information to the Commission on available opportunities.
Does he live in Texas or the DC area?
No, he is not here.
He's in the DC area.
He's in DC, where he needs to be. Is there any other questions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, consideration and possible action to approve an inter-local agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District for the use of two school buses during the Parks and Recs 2023 Summer Recreation Program, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. I just wanted to note for the record that Commissioner Betis has abstained from this item. Javier?
Mayor, City Commission, again, I'm Javier Mendez, for the record, Parks Director. This item here is, is to request for the city to enter into an inter-local with the HCISD. We do this every year. We, we, I guess, lease their buses for the summer, and one of them, it's, it's one bus, and then the second one is a standby in case one goes down. But what we do is we bus our, the students that we have during our summer program to different field trips, or we take them to the full, depending on what school we're at, because the school, the, the district also loans us three schools where we conduct our summer programs. So the money is budgeted for the use of these buses, so we do it every year, and so staff recommends approval.
Make the motion approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. And you got that, Melinda, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And moving on to board appointments, I'll start with Commissioner King, please.
I have none, ma'am.
None.
I, if you can just check, I know I asked last time, I don't think I got an answer if Ms. Wagner was on the healthy Harlingen board, and if, if she has already been appointed, then it's fine, if not, which one pointer at this time?
And both of my Veterans Advisory Board members have, have left the board for one reason or another. So if there's any veterans out there in the crowd, or in TV land there, please contact me through the city to appoint a couple of veterans. Thank you, I appreciate your help.
And to that note, I, thank you for that. I did need to remove Jessica from the Veterans Advisory Board. She is unable to work schedule conflicts, so we need to remove her, and I will be reappointing as soon as possible.
Done.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item 11 is executive session on the following items. Item A, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to receive privileged attorney-client communication regarding contractual rights and obligations. Item B is consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to receive privileged attorney-client communication regarding contractual rights and obligations, and that is what we have. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now going to move into executive session. The time is 6:32, and we hope to be out shortly. Thank you for your patience. All right, the time is now 7:44, and we are out of executive session. We do have item number 12, but there is no action at this time, and so at this time, we are going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much.